John, are you there? Monica Amerton. Stephanie Iker. And Chair Hickok. Here. Thank you. Let's move on to approval of minutes, item B2B. Oh, hold on a second. While we let Commissioner Lang into the... He's here now. Jonathan Lang, are you... Have you joined the meeting? Thank you. Can we have a motion on the floor? I see Board Member Iker. Can I have a second? Amerton seconded. Ms. Iker, can you speak to your motion, please?
I move to approve the meeting minutes on Thursday, May 14th, Thursday, May 28th, and Thursday, June 11th.
Are there any corrections or edits, please?
I have one correction. On May 14th. Can you hear me? On May 14th, I move, or I have one correction on, um, my comments under H, the very last sentence. I said that it would be outside, um, the discretion of the board. The word "discussion" just needs to be changed to discretion, please.
What page again?
Page four of eight.
What was the correction again, please?
Please change the word "discussion" to "discretion" in the last sentence of my remarks under my findings.
Any other revisions?
No, thank you.
Any other comments, please? Hearing none, do we need to take a roll call, or... Are there any objections? Same none were approved. Next item is Special Order of Businessness, Executive Sessions. Are there any disclosures, please? Same none, we'll move on to informational item number two. Reformatting Title 21 Land Use Regulations for Downtown Anchorage. Staff, could you please speak to this?
Thank you, this is a very brief informational item. It's just regarding, uh, May 28th, 2020, the downtown zoning districts were moved from old Title 21, uh, to new Title 21 or to current Title 21. And those zoning districts were the B2A, B2B, and B2C districts. There weren't any changes or substantive changes that were applied to the zoning districts. Uh, they were just moved and reformatted into current code. And this is step one of a multi-step process. Step two will be a targeted plan review and update of the 2007 Anchorage Downtown Conference of Plan. And step three, we'll use those results to implement further changes to the downtown zoning districts. So this is just a brief informational item to make the board aware of this change to code. And I'm happy to take any questions. Um, otherwise, there's more information in item C2 in front of you. Thank you.
Please use your chat feature if you have any questions for staff. Same none, we'll move on to consent agenda. Doesn't appear that we have any resolution for approval. No appearance requests, no finished business, no regular agenda. I think we're ready to go to public hearing. Action by the board shall require the favorable vote of a majority of the fully constituted board. A fully constituted board shall consist, shall include all members of the board, including vacancies, not excused for conflicts of interest. For a variance to be granted, all eight standards must be met. Every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face, it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court. Case number 2020-0101. Will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
On June 29th, 2020, a total of 115 public hearing notices were mailed. Uh, 14 letters non-objection were received from nearby property owners, all of which are available on the comments section of the staff report. And the community council provided a resolution in support of the variance as seen in supplementary packet one. Thank you.
Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice in this case? Same none, can you move forward?
So this is a request to allow proposed deck and addition consisting of two bedrooms, a bathroom, and a living area to encroach up to 13 feet into 25-foot streamside non-setback required per municipal code. This required setback is measured from the defined bank of the stream that runs parallel to the southern property line of the subject lot. Without the deck, the addition would encroach up to 4.5 feet into the streamside non-setback. And the addition itself would be 1,057 square feet connected to the existing 778 square feet, uh, square foot A-frame style single-family home, which is shown in the site plan in the application. Most of the subject lot is located within Class C wetlands. Any development in Class C wetlands will require a general permit for the 2014 Anchorage Wetlands Management Plan. The requirements applicable to this parcel, which is described in Site Number 213 in Figure 1 in the staff report. Um, these requirements are, are in addition to Title 21's streamside zone setback requirements that are shown in Figure 2 of the staff report and are separate from this variance application. When the, uh, when the application is distributed to the departments, Watershed Management Services responded that it does not support the variance request due to impacts to vegetation in the streamside zone and the proposed addition's proximity to the stream on the parcel that is subject to seasonal flooding during break-up, heavy winter rain, or spring runoff. Vegetation within streamside zone, the streamside zone is necessary to protect water quality and to provide ample run for stream flow during winter icing and flooding events. The proposed variance would negatively impact these benefits. Uh, Watershed Management Services' full comment is available in the comments section of this report. And considering findings for the standards. Standard A, the standard is not met. Most of the subject lot is covered by Class C wetlands, as shown in the site plan provided in the application and the map in Figure 3 in the staff report. The unnamed stream that is protected by the streamside zone setback also runs through the entire south side of the subject lot. Other land in the same zoning district is covered by Class C wetlands, and the Anchorage Wetlands Management Plan designates these wetlands as developable, subject to a general permit. Therefore, although the stream setback does concern the property to some degree, the Class C wetlands are developable, and similar constraints apply to other nearby lots. Standard B, the standard is not met. A deck of the size and type that the applicant proposes is part of the addition to the existing structure. Uh, it's not an amenity commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same zoning district. Many nearby lots in the same zoning district that are encumbered by streams of wetlands have been developed with structures containing 1,000, 2,000 square feet of living area. So it is possible that the applicant may suffer undue hardship if they were unable to build any addition onto their existing 778-square-foot home. However, the applicant has not demonstrated that the current design, the proposed deck and addition, is the only design available to navigate the physical circumstances of their lot. Standard C, uh, the standard is not met. The hardship appears to be self-imposed because the applicant has not demonstrated the deed of the proposed addition to encroach into the streamside non-setback. Additionally, as discussed in Standard B, the size and height of the deck the applicant proposes is an amenity that does not appear to be commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district. The proposed deck condition could be redesigned to avoid the streamside non-setback. Therefore, the conditions and circumstances of the proposed deck and the addition as currently designed appear to constitute an inconvenience rather than an exceptional or undue hardship. Standard D, the standard is met. No adjacent properties would be adversely affected by this variance. 14 nearby property owners sent letters stating that they're not objection to the requested variance. And the applicant states that the adjacent property owner to the north does not object to the variance. And, uh, after the staff report is finalized, the Girdwood Board of Supervisors, which is also the community council for Girdwood, um, did submit a resolution in support of the variance. Standard E, the standard is met. The requested variance is dimensional and would not allow prohibited use or change the character of the zoning district. Standard F is met. There are no identified health or safety issues with the structure or proposed encroachment. Standard G is met, the standard is not applicable. Finally, Standard H, uh, the standard is not met. The applicant has not shown that encroaching into this transite zone, zone setback is required in order to make possible a reasonable use of the land. And with that being said, uh, municipal code requires that all eight standards be substantially met in order for a variance to be granted. The department finds that Standards A, B, C, and H are not substantially met, and therefore recommends denial of the variance. If, after a public hearing, the board finds that all eight standards are substantially met, then the approval should be subject to the conditions on Page 6 of the staff report. Thank you.
Are there any questions of staff by the board?
Board Member McKay. Question for staff. Um, actually, I just want to make sure, um, on the, on the first page of the, of the staff packet, under applicable land use regulations, that we are, um, the applicable one is the Girdwood, uh, residential district table, not the Chugiak Eagle River one?
Yes, that's correct. Uh, that was an error that I meant to identify, uh, during my presentation. So I apologize for not doing so. But yes, that is, that is correct. That is not the correct, um, correct citation. The correct table is actually 2107-1 in Chapter 7. Thank you.
And the setbacks then are 20 for the front, 10 for the side, and 15 for the rear?
Yes, setbacks are correct. Those are the setbacks for, uh, zoning districts that the structure is located in. Um, I should note, and as I did mention another part of the staff report that I didn't read just now, the existing structure is legally non-conforming, so it encroaches fully into the 20-foot front setback. But the addition would not, um, um, impact that non-conforming status because it's not enlarging anything within the setback.
Thank you. Board Member Smythe.
Hello, thank you, can you hear me?
Speak a little louder.
Uh, this is Dale. So I, a question for staff, and, and tell me if, if you're not correct answered. But in reading the, the, uh, letter from Watershed Management, it mentions that a, a stamped survey drawing was not submitted. And the date on that letter was after the, uh, was after the survey date that I see in the packet. I was curious if there was some confusion of who had had what and when, and if you knew anything about that. That was just one detail I was curious if somebody knows about. Thank you.
Um, my apologies, are you referring to the Watershed Management letter?
Yes, the Watershed Management letter and the reference to, uh, it, they didn't see a stamped survey, but the stamped survey in our packet is dated uh, before that letter, I thought. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Oh, that's correct. So Watershed Management identified that there was not enough information, um, or not enough detailed information in the submittal for them to make, uh, the final determination or, you know, to really make a good call. So we, I worked with them to provide the measurements and make sure they understood the site plan, um, and that that was sufficient for their purposes.
Great, thank you.
Same no other questions. Are there any questions of staff by the applicant?
Hi, this is Shannon. Um, I don't have questions, but we have a presentation. I don't know if that is the same.
Okay, well, we'll, um, let's see. We'll go ahead and do, give you 10 minutes to present your case. Um, so the applicant, please spell your name for the record, please.
S-H-A-N-N-O-N-O apostrophe B-R-I-E-N.
Please go ahead and present your case.
All right, so thank you for your time. I'm Shannon. My husband and I have requested a stream setback variance in order to build an addition on our house located at 260 Alta. Um, I'm going to give a brief overview. And then Erin, who, yes, she is my sister, but she's a wetland specialist, will address the variance staff comments. And then Connor of the Architects is also here, and he'll answer specific questions about the design plan. Um, I asked him to come because I'm a teacher. I don't have expertise in either of those areas. Um, our home was built in 1974. We purchased it in August 2004. It's, as the report mentioned, in the road right-of-way. We were told when we purchased it that we were grandfathered in, but apparently that's actually not anything, um, that's real. So we just realized, um, through this process that we weren't. And so we did start that process, um, for the right-of-way in June. Um, we just got to the point where we sent in the check, and we are, um, sending off the letters to the utility companies. So that is in the works. Um, I'm going to describe our house. If you're facing it, um, from Alta Drive, to the right is a creek that runs intermittently slow and shallow until the spring runoff, which is, um, heavy at times when it rains and then when the winter rain comes. And then to the right of that is a park space, which is Class A wetland. And then the creek runs all the way from that corner that's in the right-of-way all the way back to the back of our lots. And then it flows going back the other way underneath the road through, um, Heritage, through a park space that's on the other side. And then, um, to the left of that is Heritage Land Bank Property, which is Class A wetland. Um, to the left of us, so to the right of us is the park space. To the left is the home, um, the closest neighbor in proximity. Um, pretty close to us. They have a roof that collects a lot of snow. It sheds very heavily. And so, actually, I have a presentation that's on a PowerPoint, but, um, it's, I don't know if you have that, but, um, it sheds very close to our house. So we took that into account when we were placing our house. It's pretty dangerous, so we make a path that we walk on to get to our house that's pretty tight to, um, where our current house is. Um, our house actually sits on fill. It's not wet. I don't know, um, what that consisted, but, um, it is the area that we want to propose the addition or that we have proposed the addition. It is fill, it's not a wet area. Um, the appraisal on the county page says that our house is 739 square feet, which is different than, I know what Connor came up with, um, with a 93-square-foot deck. Um, and our current home only has a loft for a sleeping area, and myself, my husband, and our son all co-sleep in there, which of course is not ideal. Um, but we chose to keep this house to raise our son in the support of community. Um, the addition will add 1,070-foot square feet. Most, most existing new construction in Girdwood is larger than our proposed addition, probably than our proposed addition and the house combined. Many roads, many homes on our road and connecting road include garages and decks. Um, we hired the architect to help us create an addition, and we asked for two bedrooms, a living space, a deck, and a bathroom. We requested the two bedrooms be placed on the bottom floor, which is dictating the footprint to accommodate a need to monitor our son who is autistic. This is necessary to ensure that he does not exit our home without us knowing. This happened this past spring when he became interested in birds and the rising and setting sun. He left our house three times, one at 3:00 a.m., one at 4:00 a.m., one at 5:00 a.m. So the large living room and deck, um, so that's kind of the base footprint. And then the large living room and deck kind of also accommodate his needs. Um, the large space allowing him more room to move around, and then the deck allowing a safe space to play because currently we're right on the road. And so that's kind of his favorite play space. Um, these are the things I didn't include in our application because I didn't know that I would have to justify kind of the size and why we were choosing the size and whether, um, we were worthy of that size. So, um, I also didn't want it on public record. But here it is. Um, it's kind of personal and uncomfortable to talk about. Prior to this meeting, we attended four meetings with the Girdwood Board of Supervisors, two land use committees, two boards of supervisor meetings to present our request for the support of the variance. We also placed a sign on our home as stated, and we went to as many neighbors as were home to talk about it. Everyone, um, in all of the situations were, um, supportive. And, um, the people that we went to, of course, our neighbors and the Board of Supervisors are also very familiar with our lot. They've seen it, um, they've been to it, they live near us. Um, I'm going to move it over to Erin, who's going to, um, talk about the report. But I also, if there's time, I have a PowerPoint slide with four, um, slides showing my neighbor's roof, um, the dry space where our addition, where we would propose it to be other homes on our road with second-floor decks. Um, and then the, um, a clear picture of the plot from our variance. Thank you.
Would you like to share that right now?
Well, I don't want to take too much for 10 minutes. So let's have Erin go, and then I'll do it, I guess. I meant to do it, uh, at the same time.
I, I was going to suggest if someone could help in the chat, Shannon, get the, um, pictures up. I'll just proceed with my comments, and I can probably speak to the photos once they're up on the screen. If that would help us move along. Does that work?
I believe the photos are in our packet, unless you have new photos.
Well, I took pictures of houses on our road based on the comments made in that the, um, the deck was not a luxury that other people on our road shared. So, I mean, maybe people are already familiar with Girdwood, and that's not necessary. I took a picture of the neighbor's house. I think, yeah, you have two of the pictures. You don't have the pictures of, of houses on the road with decks. But if you'd like to see those, I can show you those.
Sure, go ahead. Please go ahead and share your screen.
Okay, I'd rather Erin, um, if possible. I don't want to take up the 10 minutes because I feel like Erin's going to share something important. So should I wait?
So you only have a total of 10 minutes, and right now...
Right. I'm going to go ahead, I'm going to, yeah, I'm going to suggest I go ahead and talk. Thank you, Shannon, let me go, because we're going to run out of time.
Yep.
So, thank, thank you, and greetings from Wisconsin. In our remaining time, I'm going to address um, why we believe the staff erred in their determination that the proposal does not meet all of the required standards. Though I do not reside in Alaska, I do have personal knowledge of the site and its hydrology, and more than 20 years' experience with wetland and waterway regulations and zoning administration. I'll start by saying that we appreciate and agree with staff's determination that the proposal meets four of the standards and have no concerns with our ability to meet the conditions recommended on Page 6 of their analysis. We do disagree with their conclusion that the other four standards are not met. Their determination was made on the presumption that the setback encroachment could be avoided by building further into the wetlands, which they characterize as an allowed use under the general permit. Um, as you know from Shannon's presentation, now this project has been designed specifically to avoid the need to build in wetlands by limiting the footprint to the area of historic fill. Not only is this the least environmentally damaging alternative, as, uh, is in the design least likely to harm water quality and alter existing drainage, it's also the least expensive to the property owner and the most stable for the proposed structure. The presence of a fill would have been seen and disclosed in a pre-application site visit, which they did suggest, um, but could not be arranged. I don't know if that was COVID or something else. But what I see here is a classic example of the problems associated with regulating based on maps rather than field conditions, and perhaps, um, some poor form to recommend denial sight unseen. Um, as you've heard, the site is extremely constrained, uh, bordered by streams, wetlands, and very close neighbors. And the family has needs that are different from others, so we feel these factors were not well-considered in the staff's recommendations. Um, so now I'll speak to the standards. Standard A, the stream along the southern border of the property and extensive, uh, wetlands east of the drainage way support a finding that exceptional physical circumstances exist. Uh, the applicant notes that many property owners in the area are subject to stream setbacks or wetland constraints, but not both, and the staff presented no evidence to the contrary. Uh, pushing the development away from the stream and beyond the area of existing fill would require additional engineering, um, and relocating the drainage way. And it would likely trigger additional setback requirements associated with Class C wetlands adjacent to streams. So the only viable option is to build on the portion of the property that was previously filled and now dry. Standard B, undue hardship and deprivation of rights available to other property owners. The purpose of this project is to expand livable space and ensure the safety of a special-needs child. The proposal is modest in scope as compared to other in the community. Um, and staff acknowledges that denial of the expansion of the living, of the living space would constitute undue hardship, but they described the type and location of the deck as an amenity not commonly enjoyed by others in the community, and we believe this is not accurate. Um, many, maybe even most properties in the community have large decks and garages, albeit many decks are second-floor structures to enjoy mountain views. Um, our proposal foregoes a garage in favor of the first-floor deck because they can't sit both. Uh, and the proposed, proposed location is integral to our ne, my nephew's, um, safety. He is 12, and he cannot play outside unaccompanied. The deck provides the parents and the child's service dog a clear view of and quick access to the creek and wetland meadow beyond. They need this to monitor his activities while allowing him and frankly themselves small bits of independence. Uh, the wetlands on the adjacent property are also frequent, frequented by bear and moose, so the proposed deck provides an important physical barrier between those animals, the house, and its residents. Denial on the grounds that Standard B is not met deprives this family of the right to the safe use of their property, a right readily available to property owners on less constrained sites. Though their family's needs are different, their rights are the same, and Standard B is thus met. Standard C, the hardship is not self-imposed. Uh, this deck is not just a discretionary amenity. The fact of it, the location, and the design are really essential to this family's need. Staff's characterization of this request for variance as merely an inconvenience to the family really trivializes the, the challenges they face in providing a safe environment for their child. Um, their recommendation also elevates the nominal potential...
Your time is up, ma'am.
Okay, well, at the, um, board's discretion, at the board's, yes, I just have about one, uh, 30 more seconds. Thank you. Um, you know... Their recommendation also elevates the nominal effects the deck may have on stream quality above all other considerations. And this places an undue burden on the family. Uh, the hardship is not self-imposed, and thus Standard C should be deemed met. Um, Standard H, their determination that the proposal exceeds the threshold of what's needed to make a reasonable use of the land is based on incomplete information. They never saw the site. They believed it was, um, wetlands, and it's not. Uh, the design makes use of existing fill. The footprint is driven by the need for adjacent bedrooms. They are pinched by a small intermittent stream, wetlands, and close neighbors.
Your 30 seconds are up, ma'am.
We believe Standard H is met. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions of the applicant from the board members? Are there questions of the applicant from the board members? I don't see any questions, but I have some questions. So you were talking about the filling of the area for the addition. It's, is it uplands or is it wetlands?
So where our house is, is filled. Erin, maybe, I don't understand the maps for the wetlands. This is Shannon. It looks as if our whole property is declared Class C wetland, which maybe it was at one time per our neighbor when he built in the 80s. He said that the whole, the whole area has changed. There weren't even trees when he moved in here. So where our house is and where the addition is, is fill. Where the addition would, should be, we would like it to be.
And then what is the value of the wetlands where the proposed addition is?
Shannon, may I speak to this one?
Please. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So as Shannon mentioned, and the staff also mentioned, the, you know, in the municipal wetlands plan, essentially the whole parcel is mapped wetlands, but I think we're probably all familiar with the ways that those wetlands don't necessarily accurately illustrate the exact wetland boundaries. And in this case, when this home was built back in the 70s, fill was placed at that time to make it suitable for development, and the proposed addition is occupying an area that is remnant fill from that presumably fill that went in when the house was first built. So the wetlands on their property is classified Class C, but our presumption is that no general permit for wetland fill is needed because the architect has done a really nice job designing the proposed addition to occupy that area of remaining fill.
So have you had a jurisdictional determination done on your wetlands?
That has not been done yet.
But you're in the permit process?
We have not gotten the permit. We have just, we kind of stayed in the variance process. We were hoping, of course, that we would build the summer, and then as the, well, as COVID came and things got kind of slower, we didn't even apply for our permit yet. We're waiting to see what happens tonight, and then we will apply for our permit.
So from my-
And of course, I'm sorry, I was just going to say, of course, our understanding is that the ability of the project to move forward would be contingent upon verification by the Corps of Engineers that no wetland fill permit is required. We believe we'll secure that approval, but obviously the project wouldn't be built without that verification.
So from my experience in the past, you have to have a field investigation done in order to justify your jurisdictional determination, and that field work has to be done before October? Have you engaged anybody to do that work?
Nobody has explained this to us, so I'm not really clear about this. Who would I have found that information from? Was that from?
You would hear that information from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers? Did they?
Oh, right. Okay. Right. Okay. Correct. I think, I believe that we understood that we would need to contact them. I did not know that there was a deadline of October, but that's good information, so thank you very much for letting me know that.
So I guess in this instance, you're just going with the approved, the existing mapping that the county has?
The municipality was basing their determinations based on the maps without ever actually seeing the site, but if you go out into their yard where the proposed addition is and sink a shovel, you're going to hit a very thin layer of topsoil above dirt, above, excuse me, above rocks.
Okay. Looks like we have some more questions. Commissioner, or Board Member Smythe, you have some questions?
Well, just for, in reference to the conversation you were just having, Tony, you're more familiar with this than I am, but I just read on the municipal website, the Class C are developed according to the opinion of a compliance from the planning department and not the Corps of Engineers, right? A and B are core, so I believe, and anyone jump in, I believe that are, like the applicant has stated, it's up to us to decide this first, and then it would move on, but it's not affected by the Corps of Engineer or those. So anyways, you educate us or anyone else. Thanks.
Board Member McKay. Question, through the chair, question for the applicant. Referencing the watershed management comments, they, in the last part of their comments, they say, "The addition could be rotated approximately 90 degrees and move parallel to the north property line. The same general footprint would fit on the property and not encroach into any setbacks, and it would allow for a deck on the south side." Can you elaborate on why you think that's not a good idea?
Oh, maybe Connor can help me with that? I see him pulsing. Connor, are you here? Hmm. Well, Connor was having some trouble with his phone earlier, so I hope, okay.
I see that he's logged in, but he needs to dial in on the bridge line to speak.
Shannon, do you want to take a crack at this while Connor's troubleshooting his technical difficulties, and then maybe the board would allow a revisit?
I'm not sure if I, yeah, I mean, I feel like a really kind of like unintelligent landowner here. I mean, I know our land. We've lived on it for 16 years, but there is a drainage ditch. The runoff in that wetland during the spring runoff and winter runoff kind of comes across in a sheet and is caught in that drainage ditch that then channels it into the creek. Oh, here he comes. Might have been-
Hello, this is Connor Scher. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Please go ahead. Spell your names.
Okay, great. Yes, for the record, this is Connor Scher from Z Architects in Girdwood. Connor is C-O-N-N-O-R-S-C-H-E-R, and I'm able to respond to, I believe, Commissioner McKay's question about the siding of the addition. And just for my recollection, because it was a little hard getting on the line, can you repeat the question, please?
Certainly. Through the chair, the last paragraph of the comments from Watershed Management say, "The addition could be rotated approximately 90 degrees and move parallel to the north property line. The same general footprint would fit on the property and not encroach into any setbacks. It would also allow ample room for a deck on the south side of the addition." And I wanted to know why that was not something that you wanted to do.
Sure. Okay. So the primary reason for siding it in the way that we did was to put as much distance between the addition and the neighboring structure to the, on the property to the north, which according to Shannon and in the photos that she had shown, that area is an area of snow shedding from the neighbor's roof. And so locating the structure as far away from that as was practical would avoid that situation of snow shedding onto the structure. The other reason was more of a question of the arrangement of the spaces. And the, having the addition close to the existing structure shortened the corridor necessary to connect them. Siding it on the north would distance it from the stream. That would be true, but the, it wouldn't be able to work with the same footprint or have a practical connection to the existing structure. So it was balancing sort of those four criteria, one, the proximity of the addition to the structure, the distance from the neighbor to the north whose snow sheds onto O'Brien's property, and then as well as providing proximity, I'm sorry, arrangement of the interior spaces that was practical to fit two regular-sized bedrooms on the ground floor. And then finally, to keep as distant from the stream and drainage way as was also practical. And so this was, this was a product of several site layouts and iterations. But I guess the primary reason for not locating it on the northern portion of the property was the snow shedding.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions from the board? I don't see any, but I have some more. Okay. So what is the minimum variance that you're requesting tonight? I see that there's wetland setbacks and stream setbacks. What is the dimensional variance you're requesting tonight?
The stream setback.
Which, what dimension?
Connor, can you answer that?
Yes, this is Connor Scher. In response to your question, the variance is requesting a, the application is requesting a dimensional variance from the stream setback outlined in Title 21 that is detailed in the staff report. It was clarified to us after the application was submitted that the wetland stream setback mentioned in the Anchorage Wetlands Management Plan is not under the jurisdiction of this body. And that's, and so that's an additional requirement for streams contiguous with wetlands, which Title 21 mentions, but the specific language of code that the applicant is requesting a variance from is the 25-foot stream setback for non-named streams.
And what is the exact dimension from the 25-foot?
I will pull up the staff report. This is-
It looks like staff may have an answer. I'm going to defer to staff.
Yes, I would defer to staff.
So the total encroachment requested is 13 feet into the required 25-foot stream sides and setback. The structure itself minus the deck encroaches 4 and 1/2 feet in the setback. The deck plus the structure encroaches 13 feet.
Did that answer your question?
Are there any further questions from the board?
Can I make a comment? This is Shannon, the homeowner.
I'm sorry, you can't.
Okay. Thank you.
Shall we go into public testimony? Or is there anyone from the public who can testify?
Hello?
Hello, is this Mike Edgington?
Speaking, yes.
This is Ziva calling for your public testimony on case 2020-0101. You'll have five minutes-
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure the TV, I just want to make sure the TV was quiet so we didn't get any feedback.
You'll have five minutes to provide your testimony. If you could state your name for the record, you may begin.
Certainly. My name is Mike Edgington, M-I-K-E-E-D-G-I-N-G-T-O-N. I'm the land use supervisor on the Girdwood Board of Supervisors. Girdwood Board of Supervisors is ex officio actus a community council. So I won't take five minutes. I'll be very brief. So as Shannon said, the, first of all, the primary purpose is occasionally we've sent in letters of support or other things, and they've not been included in the packet, so I just wanted to make sure we had the opportunity to make sure our comments were recorded here, and I'll be available for questions as well. So I just wanted to say briefly that we have a fairly extensive local process. We require presentation at two land use meetings a month apart and two Girdwood Board of Supervisors meetings a month apart. The schedule was slightly squashed into, I think, six weeks rather than eight, but all four presentations and public engagements happened. We had basically no opposition at all in any of the meetings. The EDC vote, which is open to the public, was 14-0 in favor. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors vote was 3-0 in favor. Girdwood is, as I'm sure many of you know, is, has lots of very odd-shaped lots in fairly difficult conditions. Much of it was planted before there was any code. Much of it was planted when the extensive network of streams were probably not quite as understood as they are now. This is one of many examples of lots where a small structure was put on place, probably without, well, not really within the lot at all, which is not uncommon here. We have lots of situations where, you know, the many, many, many streams we have coming in from the close by mountains encroach on the smaller amount of developable land. So this is not an unusual situation. It's fairly standard, but it's fairly common for these sort of difficulties to happen. It's very common as well for structures to only really exist because of the grandfathered rights. So again, I think there was everyone, at least in the Board of Supervisor meeting, and I think land use sort of knows the family, knows the area, knows the lot, understands the difficulties, and supports granting of this variance. I'll take any questions if you have them.
Are there any questions? No, we do not. Thank you for your testimony, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity.
That concludes public testimony. That concludes public testimony.
Does staff have any rebuttal?
No, thank you.
And the applicant did not have any time remaining for rebuttal? And I believe the matter rests with the board if there are no additional questions. May I have a motion, please? Though the public hearing is closed and the matter rests with the board. May I have a motion, please? Motion by Board Member McKay, I'll take a second. Please go ahead and type that in chat. Seconded by Board Member Hale, thank you. Please speak to your motion. Well, the motion was to approve a variance to allow proposed addition and deck to encroach thirteen feet into the required twenty-five-foot stream site zone setback subject to conditions one through five on page six of the packet. And I am not going to support my motion. I don't believe that the petitioner has met the burden of proof that this is the minimum variance required to make reasonable use of the land. As far as the standards go, I agree with staff that standard A is not met, that Class C wetlands are developable. And in their testimony, the applicant stated that the main reason for the siding of this addition is to, is because the neighbors, they're snowshed from the neighbors. And I think there are other solutions regarding snowshed from the neighbors other than siding the addition where they did. And standard B, I don't believe that the applicant has demonstrated that the design of the deck and addition is the only one available to navigate the physical circumstances on their lot. And C, for standard C, that the current design does appear to constitute just an inconvenience rather than an undue hardship. I agree with staff on D through J, or G as being met. And then for standard H, that this is not the minimum required to make a reasonable use of the land. Board Member Harold, would you like to speak to your motion?
Through the chair, I agree with staff findings as well. And I realize that Girdwood's difficult to develop sometimes, but it sounds like there is an opportunity here to develop within the code, maybe just by adding tabs to the neighbor's roof to keep it from dumping snow over on you. But I'm also in agreement with the staff's findings and will have a, not going to be able to support the motion. That's all I have.
Would any other member like to speak? Board Member Iker?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I do plan to support the motion. I think with regards to standard A, we heard testimony regarding not only the location of the stream, but also the adjacent structure and the snowshed, which is beyond this landowner's control. And the existing fill that is already on the site and the thought to utilize that in relation to the addition. So I find all of those things to persuade me that standard A is met. With regards to standard B, I think that the board heard a considerable amount of testimony from a variety of people from, you know, familiar in the fields, from wetland experts to the architect to the Girdwood Land Use Council representative. And they all opined that this was a reasonable addition to allow for a commonly enjoyed use of the property and it would fit within the characteristic of the Girdwood buildings and code. With regard to standard C, I don't believe that this hardship is self-imposed, that the special conditions would deprive the applicant from a reasonable use of their land. They are not, in my opinion, building anything that is above and beyond what their neighbors already have. And they already described the special needs of their family's circumstances. And I think that constraining them to a design that is, that in the board's opinion is not as informed as their opinion for what their family needs is not an appropriate outcome in this case. And with regards to the standard H, I would find that this, again, is the minimum amount necessary to make a reasonable use of a single-family home for their family with a child with special needs. And I would support, again, this motion.
Board Member Smythe?
Yes, thank you, through the chair. I also intend to support the motion. I think just a few comments here. They had a fantastic presentation on all levels and I think an important thing for us to take in mind here, regardless of the standards, is also we have heard the people speak that know this area better than the other ones here. The folks that live and reside in this community that are not known for supporting a lot of development support this. And I think they're doing it correctly. As it relates to the standard, that's A and B. I have to agree with Board Member Iker and with the applicant that there's a lot of things that could be done here that they're not asking for. This is a percentage-wise, very minor into a lot. And again, into, I think that we've heard this before in other cases, into a drainage setback in a lowest-value wetland that is arguable. We've, this problem in Girdwood has come up many times and I think it's got to be noted that strict adherence to information that's shown in mapping that was not done on a lot-by-lot basis with the accuracy to the tenth of a foot. We have to recognize that and that the reason for this board is to hear these specific cases, to hear specific cases from specific people in the community. And that's all I've got to say, thank you.
Board Member Emmerton? Board Member Emmerton, you are requested to speak?
I'm sorry, I had the mute button on, apologies. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, sorry about that. I agree with Board Member Iker and Board Member Smythe's comments. I intend to support the motion as well. And I had a hard time with hearing that nobody actually went out and looked at the site from the wetland perspective. And I feel like that's a pretty important part for this whole variance. And that's all I have.
Anybody else who wants to speak?
Well, I am actually going to be supporting this motion. And looking at it from a wetlands perspective, it sounds that they cited the site or the building located in the least affected area to wetlands. Looking at all the side, front, rear setbacks, it's a very tight corner. They're asking for a very small addition to their home, only asking for two bedrooms. Being a mother of special needs children, I absolutely understand the need to be close to them, to hear them at two in the morning, so I can appreciate that. And I entertain any, I believe we're going to do a roll call.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes?
Mr. Hale?
No.
Mr. Hale, was that a no or a yes?
Uh, no.
Mr. Lane?
Yeah?
Ms. Emmerton?
Yes.
Ms. Iker?
Yes.
And Ms. McKay has voted no, Chair Hickok has voted yes, thank you. That motion passes.
Thank you so much for your time, I really appreciate it.
Let's see, do we have any reports, anybody? Any board member comments? How is the sound today?
This is Stephanie, this has been a tough meeting. I don't know why I didn't have problems with the last two meetings we had, but this one has lots of echoes and you guys are faint in the, on the audio for me.
Yeah, this is Dale. In the beginning it sounded like, sorry, this is Dale. In the beginning it sounded like the chambers weren't on the phone call. I could only hear you through the Teams meeting and I could hear everybody else on the telephone, if that makes any difference. It did get better, but the echo was always pretty bad.
Thank you. For the comments, I think we noted the same issues here in the chambers. It sounds good from us speaking into the chamber, but I can imagine the echo. Well, I think I will entertain an adjournment.
This is Stephanie, so moved.
And I'll get a second from Emmerton and Lane, we're ready. Your turn, thank you everyone.